Ordinance's presentation. I'll ask Commissioner Edwards if he would have our invocation. Commissioner Mason, would you lead us in the pledge to the flag, please?
Let us bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for another day to come together, do the business of the county that you asked that you watch over us, guide us, and take us all home safely. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming tonight, and I'd like to thank the joint meeting that we're having tonight with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission. So at this time, I'll just turn the meeting over to Ms. Shayna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners and members of the Planning Commission. Thank you all for coming out this evening. This is our second update that we're providing to the Boards for the Unified Development Ordinance. I do have with me today a member of our consultant team from Candy Keys, Brian Mayberry, and he will take you through our progress so far. I think both Boards, you were provided a copy of the first draft, and again, it's still a work in progress, and we will take any questions after.
Thank you, Shayna. Pleasure to be with you all today. Thank you for coming together for this update. Brian Mayberry from Candy Keys Collaborative. Again, this is very much a work in progress, any project like this, especially with a document this large. You have definitely a very big set of regulations for this Unified Development Ordinance, and there is a lot to work through on our side, and then a lot to work through when people are reviewing it. So it's, like anything, a work in progress and a draft until it's actually adopted by the Board of Commissioners. First, when it has, would have, you know, a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then go to the Board of Commissioners for final say, but that's still a little bit out. Today, I'm just here to update you all on our progress for what we call Module One of the Unified Development Ordinance update. And the material I can kind of provide you in this presentation is very much just the high-level, kind of the highlights of the highlights, or the tip of the iceberg of the tip of the iceberg for everything that we've been working on, and there is still, again, a lot to go. So I'll go over that, there's some next steps, and then open it up to questions and answers anyone might have. We did have gotten some questions from someone, and we'll probably get many more, in writing. I've provided a first cut at many answers to those, to Shayna, and eventually those may be provided to you all when they're kind of ready for your review. But those are kind of in the works in case you've heard of kind of some questions that have been submitted already. But then, again, I'll take verbal Q and A here at this meeting here in our hour or so that we have here. This project started in July of last year with some initial stakeholder meetings and introductory things that my coworker Rachel and I performed here in the county. We then did a kind of a critique of your existing standards and regulations, and those were presented to you all, I think toward the end of the year last year. And now we are again in the Module One drafting stage, and Module One and Module Two, and I can describe what makes up those two modules here in a second, but that's the bulk of the work that is in this project. We are looking toward adoption, public hearings and adoption early next year, and so between now and then, we still have a lot to do of incorporating the feedback we're hearing, working on new provisions, putting them kind of all together into a consolidated draft that the public can also review. Module One, which is what you've been given, consists of what we would just call kind of general provisions, like the purpose of the UDO, what its jurisdiction is, where it gets its authority from, kind of legalistic provisions like that for Chapter One. Chapter Two, which are the zoning districts and their kind of dimensional standards, so lot area, lot width, building height, density, those kind of numbers, along with purpose statements for each of the zoning districts, what their purpose is, what they are trying to kind of accomplish. And then the third chapter of Module One is land uses, which are the use table, use standards, you know, what land uses are allowed in what zoning districts, and what specific standards apply to them, standards for temporary uses, standards for accessory uses, standards for things like telecommunication towers, and those kind of things are make up Module One. Then in Module Two, which we are still working on in our in-house, in our shop, is the design standards, so that would be signs and landscaping and parking. That would also include the procedures, so how, what the steps are for a rezoning, who makes recommendations on a rezoning, or a variance, or a site plan, and who takes final action on those different applications. We also, as part of Module Two, will be nonconformities or grandfathering, how something that was built, you know, either before zoning was even adopted in the county, or how some, you know, a legal structure was built, but then maybe the rules changed in the UDO at some point, and that structure no longer meets current standards, how those kinds of scenarios are addressed, as well as enforcement and definitions. And so that will be part of Module Two, which again is coming later. So those are the two kind of pieces that we're working on for the overall UDO. Oh, and also in Module Two is the subdivision standards, which are currently called the land development or...
Development Regulations.
Development Regulations, sorry, thank you. Those are basically kind of subdivision standards and some other design standards that will all come together into a true unified development ordinance. So some highlights of Module One, again, these are just very high-level highlights from the draft. First, Chapter One, general provisions, as I mentioned earlier, many just kind of legalistic things that have to be said in a document like this, but that don't attract very much attention, and clarifies what the jurisdiction of the UDO is, which is the unincorporated area of Newton County. It addresses how conflicts are handled. If there were a conflict, we wouldn't, we don't, definitely don't want to have conflicts in it, but human nature, eventually over the years, this document is going to be amended by people over the years, and there might end up being accidentally conflicts, how those are handled, and basically, you know, the stricter standard applies if there's one piece of the UDO says one thing and another part of the UDO says a different thing. All things being equal, the thing, the provision that's stricter applies, and that's kind of a, I think, a basic kind of legal guideline that many documents follow. Or if there's a conflict in the words versus an illustration, because this document has a lot of illustrations, being a modern UDO and, you know, fit for 2025 or 2026, if there's a conflict in the actual words versus an illustration, then the words control over what's on in an illustration. So just laying that out so it's clear how to handle conflicts like that. There's a note in there about illustrations are for illustrative purposes only, they're not meant to show scale, they're not meant to be survey documents, you know, that are down to the centimeter or millimeter for different kinds of drawings, they're meant to give an idea of what the regulations are saying, not that they are exactly what a site would look like if it were developed under the written rules of the UDO. There's rules for transitional provisions, which are the standards for, you know, when this, when this UDO is adopted early next year, there will be some applications that are still under review by staff, and those would fall under the previous rules, the old UDO, as opposed to this current, or the, what will be at that point, the new adopted UDO. There are methods and illustrations for how to measure certain things, how to measure building height, how to measure setbacks, how to measure lot width, all of those kind of important characteristics are described in both words and with images so that it's clear what we mean when we say lot width or setback. And then there are some, what we could call, exceptions or special cases that are spelled out, which are basically sort of permitted encroachments into setbacks, or permitted encroachments into building heights, like church steeple is a good example of that, where, you know, if there's a district that has a 45-foot height limit, you know, it's very common to see spires or other kinds of, you know, architectural features that are usually not really inhabited, that they're there for a sort of decoration, allowing those to exceed the height limit, you know, instead of having a person that owns the property have to come forward for a variance just for an unoccupied, you know, kind of aesthetic feature of a building. Same goes for something like bay windows or chimneys that encroach into a side setback, those kind of minor parts of a building that are just allowed by the, written into the UDO are allowed to encroach into setbacks and height limits. So those are all spelled out there in Chapter One as well. So then, changing gears sort of to Chapter Two, which really is the bulk, I would say, of Module One, some key changes to tell you about, expanding housing types that will be allowed in certain residential districts. Of course, we hear from many of our stakeholders here, most of our stakeholders here, that single-family detached is the most important, or the most, you know, the most significant or the most kind of popular, and what many people want to see continue here in the county, and that is reflected, I think, in the draft, and will continue to be reflected in the draft. But there are certain zoning districts that allow for other types of residential buildings, whether it's townhouse or multiplex, which is four units in one building, or tiny homes. Those are all spelled out with illustrations and descriptions and definitions of what we mean by those. One set of questions we had was to please be sure that townhouses and single-family detached are clearly differentiated, and I believe they are. A townhouse is a set of units that are each on separately platted lots, but that are connected with a firewall in between, so, you know, you've got three or four in a row there, but they're each under separate ownership, under, on separately platted properties. That's all described out in the UDO to make clear that that's one thing, while a single-family detached home with, you know, which is one building that's not connected to any other buildings, it's on its own lot, that those are clearly differentiated as clearly as we can make it. Some more changes that are in Chapter Two. There is a established and illustrated menu of what we call amenity spaces or amenity types that are sort of like an expansion on the open space concept. So in kind of suburban and rural development, you know, open space is parkland or just unspoiled natural land that gets set aside as an amenity for the development, and that's great for suburban settings. There are some more kind of mixed-use zoning districts in this draft that are more oriented toward having a mixed-use or walkable environment for certain areas, you know, or certain districts in the county, and so having those kind of wide-open spaces doesn't work as well when you're trying to have a pedestrian-oriented development or a mixed-use development. And so there are alternatives here to fill in for conventional kinds of open space, and those could be in the form of like plazas, or as you see up there, community gardens, or greenways, recreational facilities, things that aren't the conventional and traditional concept of open space are kind of, they're kind of broadened to include other kinds of amenities that make a, that add a benefit to a development and give a place to socialize or to have recreation, or to gather, or to get exercise, and those kinds of activities. Let's see, I think, there's, each district has a certain amenity space amount, percentage-wise, that has to be provided for, like, for example, for a residential development, so based on a percentage of the overall area of the development. Now, this isn't, you know, per lot in the development, it's for the overall, you know, development, and so that's how it applies. We can also have, we don't have it currently in the draft, but we can have incentives for different kinds of amenities, like if there is something that the county really wants to promote, like if community gardens there, just as an example, since it's on the screen, if that were something that the county was wanting to promote as far as more residents having access to fresh, you know, vegetables, and having the exercise that comes with gardening, and the kind of intergenerational interaction that can come along with gardening, then those could be incentivized above something like, just as another random one, greenways, or trails, or something like that. And so that's not really done yet in the draft, but if we hear, as people are reviewing the draft, if that's something they would like to see, then we can definitely do that, and it's something we've done other places as well that has been successful, I think. Continuing with some changes in Chapter Two, there are development types, and think of those sort of like the overlays, but they're not really quite like the overlays. They are ways to do a development within the residential districts that are kind of a menu in each of the, in many of the residential districts, not each of them. There's the conventional development type, the conservation, and the tiny home or cottage development type. So there's examples, visual examples there on the right side of the screen for each of those three development types. The conventional there, where there is very little open space set aside, which is that kind of pale yellow or pale green in the upper-left corner of the kind of just theoretical subdivision that's up there on the, on the screen, that's the conventional. That's just kind of laying out the lots. Some would call it cookie cutter, that's, you know, not what I would say, but sort of just laying out the lots and not really setting aside any extra open area or amenity space. Then there's the conservation to the right of that one, where you can see there's, in the kind of the lower half, a called-out, set-aside amenity space area there that is open to the residents or to the public, you know, free to access, and it could be, you know, a combination of those things I showed on the previous slide, parkland, community gardens, again, as an example, trails, those kind of things set aside, you know, and as a result of that, the developer can get a few more units per acre, a few more lots in the development than if they had gone with the conventional option there. Neither one is mandated in any of the districts, they're at the option of the developer, but if they, if the developer does go the conservation route by setting aside additional land for these amenity space, they do get, again, more units per acre. And then the tiny home one is the bottom there, and I don't expect this to be probably used a lot, but it is an option in there in three of the districts that we're looking at, and I'll get to those three districts, I think, in a slide coming up. It just lays out the rules for if someone is to do a tiny home development, which some of, many of you may know is, generally speaking, kind of in my mind, between 400 to 800 square-foot buildings that are in a community arranged around a kind of a common green area and that are, you know, lived in. There are, we don't currently have standards for this, but there's this phenomenon also called build-to-rent, some of you may have heard. So backtracking a little from stakeholders, we've heard many times about concerns about rental of property, and a UDO can't say that a certain amount of properties in a neighborhood cannot be rented, and a certain number of properties can be rented. That's beyond what a UDO can control. But there are types of development that are on, they're called build-to-rent, and they're kind of a upcoming thing. I think maybe Shayna's office might have heard some potential applicants talking about this, but no one's ever really done one in the county that, I think that I'm aware of. But it's, if you were standing on the ground, it looks like a typical single-family detached development, you know, there's buildings, there's streets, there's sidewalks, but in reality, it is one property, one parcel, under one single ownership, but there are, it's as if it's multifamily, but instead of a big building, it's individualized buildings laid out with private streets, basically, that serve those buildings. So what I'm all, what I'm leading up to saying is, we currently don't have regulations about that in the draft, but we certainly can. We've provided them in other places that we're seeing this type of activity, or that wanted to get ahead of it and have some rules in place for when someone does come to the planning office and says, "I'm thinking about doing this," and then the staff says, you know, "We don't really have anything," it's kind of a black box, "We don't have any rules to say how to do it, if you can or can't do it," but at least if we do have some provisions in there, they're in place, and it's clear what the expectations are for a developer. So that's something we can work on and add in there if we hear a need for it and a call for it from you all and from our people we're going to be talking to tomorrow as well, which, by the way, tomorrow we are having an open house meeting, and is that in this location? Yes, here, and is it seven or six? Six o'clock tomorrow, where it'll be sort of like this, but a more just, you know, open to anyone, and anyone can weigh in and ask questions, or give comments, or whatever the case may be. So some benefits of the development type approach. So the bottom bullet there, I wanted to say first, cords are kind of a similar concept, or overlays are a similar concept, where it's like sort of an additional route for an applicant, a developer, to go, but these are, instead of being open-ended like a cord would be, where they have to come to, you know, Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners for approval, the rules are written into the districts for these development types. So they are meant to provide for flexibility, giving multiple options for site design and for the mix of housing where appropriate and where allowed. It helps with providing some administrative review and approval, thus kind of quickening the review and approval process. It, you know, with the conservation development type, it adds to the amenity space that's set aside in the county and incentivizes it. I believe your conservation overlay requires extra open space, more than kind of the base zoning district does, but it doesn't incentivize it or reward it in any way with additional units per acre, and so this one in this draft does do that by giving some additional units per acre if they'll go through the trouble of setting aside the amenity space. So that's, that's kind of the point with the development types, is of providing an alternative, but neither one, neither the conventional, the conservation, or the tiny home version are mandated, it's up to the applicant. You know, if they've got a district that allows those three, they can consider their property and what its assets are, and what its surroundings are like, and go for the route that they would, they would like to. There's a table that shows which of the districts, and this is only, I guess, kind of a excerpted table showing just six districts of where those districts are, or where those development types are allowed. In addition to what's not shown on here is allowing probably the tiny home option in the manufactured home park and manufactured home subdivision districts, which are districts you already have, but that those could be allowed in. So just a sample scenario, and then I think we'll move on from the development option stuff. If there were a kind of a hypothetical 10-acre property that was zoned R2, they could either do conventional or conservation. That R2 district allows for single-family detached dwellings, there would be, you know, a menu of amenity spaces, again, that they could use as their, to fill in their 33% requirement to provide amenity space within the development. If on that 10-acre property, if they went the conventional route, they would get about 11.6, so we could say 12 units, excuse me, on that 10-acre property. If they did the conservation option, just to put some numbers, again, to the image, they could get about 15 units per acre, so that is three more units per acre, but in trade-off for that, once again, they got to set aside the 33% amenity space in order to have that benefit. Okay, so the next few slides have a lot on them, and I don't intend to go through each of them, I will sort of give you the gist for what they're showing and go through them. Each zoning district is sort of summarized on the next few slides, and I guess this was likely in your packet, or maybe it wasn't, but we can definitely provide the PowerPoint to you so you could kind of have this as a reference. The following slides have each of the zoning districts sort of spelled out with a purpose statement up there at the top, or we'll just say the name of it at the very top, agricultural in this example, a purpose statement underneath that, so what the district is about, what it, what its character is, what its, in many cases, what its density is, what its characteristics are. The development pattern designation from the comprehensive plan that it came from, because I didn't say earlier, all the work that you do on a unified development ordinance, or a lot of the work you do on a unified development ordinance, comes from the directives of the adopted comprehensive plan. I would say that when we're working on a UDO like this, a large percentage of our direction on our work comes from the comprehensive plan, another large part comes from stakeholders that we hear from, whether they're builders, or community members, or, you know, environmental advocates, or whomever. And then a third one would be from staff, the direction we hear from staff of things that aren't working in their view in the UDO. So this, this here, this, these zoning districts will have in each of these slides, you know, the development pattern from the comprehensive plan that these come from. And then on the, below that, each of these slides has an image that just, these are, this comes from the draft itself, you know, an image showing what the district kind of looks like from a bird's-eye view, and then all the numerical stuff in the right column of, you know, density, amenity space requirement, lot area, lot width, setbacks, building heights, lot coverage, minimum floor area, all those things get covered in the table. So this is the agricultural district, you know, it's for agricultural operations, agribusinesses, very limited rural businesses, low, extremely low-density residential. It comes from the recommendations of the low-density rural residential, emerging suburban, and conservation and recreation development patterns in the comp plan. Then there's the image of kind of what you'd expect from an agricultural district, and again, the numbers. So I'll go through these with agricultural first, agricultural residential next. You can see with the strike-through and underline, there's a lot of underline words there in that column there to the right, that's because we've added in the conservation option that adds in the open space requirement there, and kind of changes some of the numerical standards in that column compared to the one on the left. The rural estate also has a conservation column in it, as you can see, kind of there's more houses being added to the, to the drawing there to kind of signify that it's getting a little bit smaller lot sizes compared to the ones before it. Then we're into R1, single-family residential one, there with the conservation column. Same for R2, still smaller, smaller lots, but still basically kind of keeping the tone of what is in the current regulations. I was telling someone earlier, you know, your, your UDO is very lengthy, very detailed, and that kind of is harder to change, or kind of harder to improve upon, harder to make additions to, because it's so detailed and covers so many different scenarios. I was saying if it was only, you know, 80 pages, and from the '60s, we could, you know, add a lot... we could, you know, add a lot to it and add a lot of content to it and make it a lot more detailed. But when it's already pretty detailed, you know, the, the main thing you can do is take stuff away to make big changes, I feel like. We haven't really taken a whole lot away at this point, but we're definitely open to doing that if, if there are thoughts for things, provisions in the current UDO that could be dispensed with. The MSR, mixed-use, single-family residential. This doesn't have the conservation option. It's just sort of carrying over the existing number, numerical standards, you know, and you'll see there bullets for well-inseptic, water-inseptic and water-insewer, just like you currently have. Multifamily residential, this is carrying over your current MFR district as well. Manufactured home park district, there was some, a few changes there related to the open or amenity space requirement. And there's some, as you can see, some underlying words for the height standards, whether it's based on whether it's a manufactured home or a site-built home, then two different height standards for those two types of buildings. Manufactured homes subdivision district, which you currently have, but which I understand is not too commonly mapped on your zoning map. There's, those provisions carried over. Getting into the commercial districts now, or the non-residential districts, I should say. Office institutional is a district that you have that's carried over. We've added in many of these the open and amenity space percentage because that was lacking in your current non-residential and mixed-use districts. Neighborhood commercial in there too. Some changes there relate to bringing the buildings closer to the street in a more neighborhood style of development for where this district applies in the county. So there's both a minimum on that one, two, third line, third row, the street frontage there. There is a minimum and a maximum, so a minimum and maximum width of the property. And then for, for C, where it says row C there, the front setback has both a minimum and a maximum from 10 feet to 25 feet. So bringing it building closer to the street. General commercial is pretty much what it sounds like, kind of the catch-all for all kinds of retail-type uses. Highway commercial, more oriented towards highly-traveled corridors. M1, light industrial, very similar to what you currently have, except again, for having the open and amenity space percentage there. Of course, a lot lower for this than what you would see in other districts. And then this ends up, heavy industrial ends up not having any amenities or open space requirement for it. The Stanton Springs Business Park is mostly areas carried over as it was or as it is. We have a kind of a question mark there for the amount of open space, but we'll work with staff to figure that one out. And I think this is the last of the districts, the MU278, mixed-use district, which is one area of the county that I don't believe, from what I've heard, just what I've picked up on, probably won't expand beyond where it is, I think, for now. So that's just one, again, one area of the unincorporated area of the county. One more kind of gear shift, the use table. There's a use table in the draft that shows, the columns are the zoning districts there that you see, A, R-E, A-R, R1, R2, et cetera. And the rows are the various land uses. And those meet, if you follow a row across, you can see where it says A, that means it's allowed. If it says AU, that means authorized use, which means there are certain standards that apply to it and it has to go to the Planning Commission for their approval. And then on this excerpt, there's not any conditional uses, but if there was a CU in a row or in a cell, that would mean that use is a conditional use permit required for that land use in that zoning district, which, as you know, requires a recommendation from the Planning Commission and then final action from the board. I already explained what the As and the AUs and the Cs mean. And then the dashes are that that land use is prohibited in that district. So, you know, factory in a residential district, of course, is going to have the little two dashes to show that that is a prohibited use. We've added some land uses to the use table. There's, you had some very massive use table, or use listings already. And so there's, you know, as I've said, the, the use matrix and use table in the current draft is still a work in progress, if you do see it. There's probably several places where there's some, where the As or the AUs aren't explained as to what they mean and we'll definitely take care of those as soon as possible. So the final slide I have is just a look ahead for, we are continuing drafting on Module Two with a significant amount of work still ahead to do on that. We will have, or I will have another trip here in November to update you on Module Two work, kind of like what I've done here in this meeting. We want to release a UDO public hearing draft in January of next year. We are tentatively looking forward and forecasting for a Planning Commission hearing on the UDO in February and then a final decision, final adoption, we hope, for March of next year. And that is my final slide and thank you for your patience. I know this is a lot to absorb and a lot to have sink in and appreciate your attention and try to answer any questions anyone might have.
Yeah, I'd like to see Chapter Two, the first slide again.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. So I, it, it, it looks as if we're going to be, instead of having our old code and answering the question, do we want to, do we want to bring this into our code? We want to bring this option in for whatever the subject we may be talking about. It looks like we've, we've added a lot of options and we're going to have to go through and pick out, remove the ones we don't want. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, I kind of was saying earlier, maybe, I think this might be what I'm hearing from you. When you have a really large document like this, a really large UDO, some places will have like 300 pages. I don't know how many in numbers, how many pages this is, but it's probably 700 or so, I'm guessing. 800, okay, even more than that. When, when it's that detailed already, we come in and it can be, you know, difficult at times to find, you know, things to, to add, you know, that to, to, I mean, there's always ways to make it better in terms of readability and, and graphics and use of tables and clarifying what things mean, having more kind of plain English wording so that it's understandable to a layperson as opposed to only an attorney. There are thing, recommendations from the comprehensive plan that we can try to bring in. But I think there could also be room for looking at provisions that either aren't enforced, you know, that, that are just on the books, kind of as they say, that could be removed, you know, just to kind of lighten the, the bulk a little bit. You know, if there are provisions that don't make sense or that are outdated, that aren't serving a purpose any longer. So in a sense, yes, there might be opportunities for, for that of removing some material from the, the UDO that, that don't make sense to have any longer. So that's, I think that's partly accurate, yes.
Okay, well, and, and I see, I see, and I've been going over this document for what, the last few weeks as, as I could. And I see there's, there's quite a bit of, I guess we'll call it redacted information. I guess that's what we're calling as antiquated or redundant maybe and we're removing it for, for the purposes of this first draft. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, so if, if it's stricken, that would be a signal that we would propose to remove it from the final product. If it's underlined, that's new language. If it's stricken, that's existing language that we were proposed to remove. And many times, it will look like, I'll say, it'll look like we're maybe removing something really significant or proposing to remove something really significant, but that's because it's probably already been said elsewhere and we're trying to avoid the repetition or it's going to be moved to another location in the document. And so that's sometimes, sometimes alarm bells go off for people that, oh, why are you removing the fact that a house has to have a driveway or something like that? And that's because we've, it's a repeat, and that's just an example. I don't, don't know if that really happened in this document, but that's a repetition that we're just proposing to remove and just say in one air, one part of the UDO.
Okay, all right. And I ask these questions because I, I don't, I don't want to see a document. I would personally prefer, there's, there's not a document, this document does not, I want this document to protect citizens. I don't, I don't, and I, and I want this document to maybe make it easier or streamline the process for a developer. But I'm not, this is not, in my opinion, this is, I'm not writing, we're not writing this for a developer. I couldn't give two, I don't, I don't care, you know. So I, I want this, I want this document to, to come from a perspective of protection of citizens and what those citizens as a whole are looking for. So that's just, just my two cents. But I, I was, I was trying to clarify, I wanted to clarify that, that we, it, it looked as if we were introducing all these options in this document and it's going to be up to us to peel the ones we don't want out. And I guess that's, I guess that's just where we are. I mean, that's.
Right, and well, we would, as part of the draft, kind of give our best thought on what could be removed, if anything. And then ultimately, you know, the, the Board of Commissioners is the ones who make the final decision on, on adoption, you know, what's in it and what's not in it. But we give as consultants kind of our best thought as far as our national experience on, you know, what would be, you know, the best way to go about that.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. I just, thank you for that explanation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, hello? Okay. Quick question I had for, in the past, we've been faced, and I know a lot of other counties have been faced with builders building homes or, or, or smaller homes or townhomes with telling the planning department that they're going to build to sell. And then they try to switch it over to rentals. Is there something we can put in place to make sure that if they're coming to say they're going to build for a, a, for a home occupancy, opposed to owner-occupant, excuse me, other than becoming a landlord?
So I do not believe that a unified development ordinance can say that a certain development has to be composed of owner-occupied houses and another portion of the development may be renters. You can do that with something like accessory dwelling units, you know, granny flats in the backyard. There's many places will say that, that building has to, or that the owner has to live in one or the other and the other one can be rented out. That's very normal. But for, for like, you know, single-family detached houses to require a certain amount to be owner-occupied, I don't believe is appropriate for a UDO. That's part of it, and I have another, I have a part two though. So this is something that would definitely require further discussion. But I have, I've seen other places say, you know, that what an applicant suggests in a public hearing, that they be held to that. So if in a hearing they were to say that, then potentially, they could be held to that, you know, percentage of, and if it were part of a cord, that's sort of a different route where, yeah, they could, I guess, well, I would say potentially, maybe a cord could be written to mandate. I don't even know about that though. I, I, that's, that's a very kind of touchy area. But what I really, what I really wanted to say again was, you can, there's, I've seen provisions say that what an applicant states as what they intend to do, they can be held to that, you know, when the rubber meets the road and they are doing, you know, the actual development. And if they were to say, talk about the composition of the rental versus the ownership, then, you know, you could look at that as sort of, that's what they said they would do and they need to stand by that as they're going through the development process.
There's just a concern for the general public when they, when they're told or they understand that, okay, we're going to have to deal with this or have this subdivision coming and all of a sudden, it's a glorified rental or almost, almost like having an apartment complex there. And that's not fair to the citizens if they, if they switch it up midstream.
Yeah, there's a lot to get involved with that and I would like to talk to Shayna more and potentially, if possible, you know, we have a, we have a legal represent, or an attorney on our, as a sub, on our, subconsultant on our team that I can definitely talk to him more about that and get his thoughts and maybe get some backing or not on my thoughts that I just gave. And because I know that is a concern here, I just don't think that the written word, my bottom line, I guess, is the written words of a UDO can't dictate amounts of rental versus ownership in a development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along those same lines, because that is definitely a concern within our community. And I know what has been presented to our board previously is whenever a developer comes in and they are wanting to develop a residential housing subdivision, I guess, once they get to a certain percentage of completion, they are then turning it over to the residents within that particular subdivision and at that particular time, whether there's a homeowners association where they can basically dictate what that percentage could or could not be. Now, what I have seen is that even homeowners associations don't want to put that in their covenant because they don't want to limit someone, for example, you know, if they have to move away or if something happens, now they are restricted, for example, to say, well, we're only going to allow on this subdivision 20% of these homes to be rental. Well, once you've gotten to that 20%, if something happens and someone, you know, needs to move and they don't really want to sell the home, but they still want to be a landlord, well, now they're restricted. They can't move because the HOA has restricted to only 20%. And if they were to do that, then they would be 21%. And so even homeowners associations, I'm finding, don't want to do that. So with that being said, since we know that we can't put in the UDO, we know that homeowners associations really don't want to restrict from that perspective, is there something that we can put in the UDO that says, if it is, by some chance, a rental property, that there's a certain standard that has to be maintained? Or could the UDO say that or is that still have to come from that homeowners association to be able to drive that?
In, in my view, that's sort of like a property maintenance code. I don't know if the county has one or not, but, and that would be whether it's rented or owned by owner-occupied. You know, I, I don't know that you could have one set of standards, like, as a, in a property maintenance code, one set of standards for rental properties and one for owner-occupied. I think it would apply across the board, owner-occupied or not. And I don't know, and that would be like maintenance standards are outside of the scope of a UDO. And I don't know if the county has a, a maintenance code as part of its overall county code. The thing to remember about a UDO is the rules apply when something is changing on the property. If it's being added, if a building is added on to, if it's being developed, if parking is being added, if a sign is being built, that's when the rules kick in. is being added, if a sign is being built, that's when the rules kick in of a UDO, as opposed to something like nuisance code or, or property maintenance is kind of just an ongoing thing, whether anything's changing on that property or not.
Because I think with the, that whole concern from ownership versus rental, and there are a lot of renters that really do care about how their home looks, how they take care of it, how they maintain it. You do have some that really do care, but I think the concern may be is that you may have some renters that may not care, and what that does is it devalues the community. And so I think what we're trying to do is make sure that we're upholding and maintaining a specific standard within our community, and we're just trying to figure out, how do we go about making that happen?
Yes.
Commissioner, thank you for the question. So our code enforcement department would play a role in that. We do have property maintenance standards in, it's in the code of ordinances. It wouldn't necessarily be in the development ordinances, but the county has other, has a code of ordinances where like our building standards are, property maintenance standards. So that is what code enforcement would follow in terms of maintaining the physical aspects of the properties.
Excellent. Thank you.
Shayna said it more succinctly than I did. Sorry about that.
And that's, I wanted to make sure that that got out and that that was on record. So that's why I wanted to push until we got to that place of putting that on record, so that, you know, our residents will know, even if it, there is by some chance, something is, you know, a developer comes in and says, we're going to make it homeowners, and somehow it changes to rental, that we do have policies in place from a code enforcement perspective to make sure that those things are enforced. Thank you.
Commissioner Long.
My question is, you know, we are paying for this. This is a UDO for Newton County. Why can't we make it the way we want it and our citizens want it? We went through the land comprehensive, I was not here then, I felt like that the whole back of that comprehensive plan book said something totally different than what the book came out. And I keep saying that, and I think I said to you guys in the very beginning, I didn't want a cookie cutter. I think there's some, some good things in here, and I think there's some things that we have to tweak, but my biggest concern is if, if Newton County, because it is going through a change here, if it wants to be a certain way, then we, there's certain things that we can put in this UDO to make it Newton County. You know, this isn't Cobb County, this isn't Cherokee County, this is Newton County, and what our, and we hear loudly what our constituents want this to be. I myself want the same things. So my concern, and we've had some problems with the conservation situation, and it just looks like we added more and more conservation in this. You know, we've had problems where people live in a rural area and then all of a sudden someone comes up and says, oh, I'm going to use the conservation rule here. And, you know, and then they use wetlands and power line easements for their set aside land. So I want to address that. That cannot be set aside. That, that, it has to be usable land.
Yeah, sure.
When I was on this board 25 years ago, when we zoned, we put all kinds of conditions as deed restrictions, okay? And we put them on the plats. And, and those are the restrictions that were part of the zoning. And I know that's a nightmare for you, Shayna, when you have, you and I have had a couple of those where we've had to go back and you've had to dig in some box in the back and all this and try to find it. But we do have the right as planning and the Board of Commissioners to put restrictions on things. That, that makes sense. I mean, we can't just put crazy things out there. But I want to make sure that we're covering all the things, and I know you, Shayna, you probably have a list 10 miles long of all the things that we've gone through, that, and these things come up with the change of time. It happens, okay? So I, you know, the conservation is a big concern for me. I just see we're adding more and more conservation. People here don't want that. If they're living in a rural area, they don't want the person across the street that has the 25 acres to sell to a guy that's going to put, you know, houses every inch of the land because he's saying that he's setting aside conservation. We just had that, a huge issue with that. Also, you know, the village concept, I have a problem with the village concept. I'm talking to my colleagues about that now. I mean, that, those little splats that were on the map, you know, they, they imply something. And then every time I ask somebody about, well, no, that's just a direction, that's just a helper. That's not going to stand up in court if we've got these splats all over the map that say you can put a village with a lot of, a lot of housing right in the middle of, of an area. So we need to look at those, and that, that has to be done right away because all this ties into that. So that's one of the concerns for me. You know, several other, and they're minor, and I'll look at them and sit down with you guys, I'm writing them up now, is, you know, looking at the chicken situation, chickens, okay? You know, if you're living in a residential community with half acre lots and people got four, you, here it says they can have up to four chickens on the property. So we probably need to revisit that a little bit, too. So there's certain, certain things I think we need to revisit, and that's fine, we'll, we'll do all that. There's one place where chickens are not mentioned, when it has the livestock, we probably need to add the word chicken there, too, because when you're going from one section to the next section, it's hard to keep up with what animals we're talking about. Because we, I live in a very rural area and, but I live in a community that's developed out over the years, and people have come in and now it's like, well, the, the order says I can have a chicken on two acres. Well, it's turned into a neighborhood now, and now they've got chickens running around.
Right.
So, so we have to kind of look at where we've progressed, I think, is some of the biggest things that I'm looking at. But all in all, I see a lot of it's rewritten, moved around. I don't see a lot, a lot, a ton of changes. I just see a lot of things moved and rewritten, probably to keep up better. I think a chart, a chart of a, a table, and I'm sure that's coming, I guess, when we get it all set up, maybe a table of contents where you could go to the front real quick and look. That would be helpful. And then everything ties into another section, and I think you've done a better job of putting all the charts in one place, because now the charts are on this page for this section, and now you've got all the little charts, whether it's permitted or not, together. I think that's very good. That helps you. I was going through Rockdale's yesterday to look for the housing size for someone, and it literally took me 30 minutes to find what type, what size house could be on a certain acreage. So we want to try to make that where it's a little bit more reader friendly. And I know it's hard to do that because of the way this is set up, but those are the concerns I have.
And just to piggyback on, on that, you know, this will be a sort of, as I've said before, rather than a, a static PDF, it's a, when it's adopted, will be kind of a native, it'll be a website itself. The code will be a website, where if you click on section 3.5.7, you click that, it takes you right to it in a new tab. You know, it has hover over definitions where the definition pops up when you hover over it and other kinds of.
Hopefully it'll be search friendly, too.
Yeah.
If you type in the word chicken and it takes you to the chicken.
It'll even, like if you typed in foul, F-O-W-L, it'll know enough.
Maybe chicken.
It'll know enough to pull up chicken. So it's, it'll be set up.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh. Oh, Commissioner Cooper, okay.
I do, ma'am. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Long again. It does need to clarify on some, certain things. It could be a little bit more user friendly. And the question is, can we put, is there any way we can put limitation on what is put in the area? Is there kind of a limitation that we can put on certain things?
Would, would that be like grandfathering, nonconformities?
Okay.
Things that are put in.
I hear a lot of the gap in, on second over area. I mean, so I think I can speak to it, but I do a lot of that. Is there any limitation on some of those, if you like?
There, there can definitely be spacing that would apply to new gas stations. It's harder to deal with things that are already there in a UDO. So, but for sure, future gas stations can be spaced out either along the same side of the street and across the street. They can be allowed only at certain types of intersections, of street classifications, and things like that that can help to, if you're wanting to minimize them, help to minimize them.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I think we are going to have to adjourn. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Break, and we'll begin our meeting in just about five minutes. meeting. I'll ask Commissioner Henderson, would you do our invocation, followed by Commissioner Long, if you would lead us in the pledge, please?
Amen. Thank you, Madam Chair. We all want to bow our heads, please. Most gracious having to follow, we come before the evening with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We come just to thank you for being God and being God all by yourself, knowing what we need, when we need it, and how we need it. And I just thank you. But most of all, my father, I thank you for, for your son, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, who really saved the day. Just we pray in our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Before we adopt the agenda, we have been asked to amend our agenda 13A, which is the appointment of Ms. Susan Nally as our county clerk, and 13B, Fairview Park Resolution, and under our consent agenda to remove 7I. Could I have a motion to amend our agenda tonight?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
No.
Okay. Thank you. That was unanimous. And now with those amendments, we need a motion to adopt the agenda tonight. Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Our fourth item on the agenda tonight is public comments. This will allow the public to comment, voice concerns or opinions regarding the agenda topics only. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. So if you would like to come up and speak on agenda topics, please come forward. If you just state your name.
Yeah, I've been here for a while now. If you don't know me by now, you probably got your last chance. This will be my last meeting here tonight. I may come back. If someone specific asks me to come speak, I may. Thanks to the efforts of our, Dave Norton from New Bern. Thanks to the efforts of our economic development teams, a little help from the New Bern Town Council. A while back, it was said that if this county's not growing, it's dying. And my answer was, we're an hour from a, a major airport. We're not going to die. But we can become undesirable. Undesirable can be a matter of opinion, and my opinion is that we have reached that point. We have, so my place has a for sale sign on it. I have a promise to a neighbor on his deathbed that I would help take care of his wife, and when she's gone, I'm gone. So anyway, to speak on tonight's agenda, you have a zoning section, just like you do just about every meeting. So I'm going to leave you with a thought. I'll get up and speak on UDL at the end, in public comments at the end of the meeting. But on zoning, if you look at a monopoly board... comments at the end of the meeting. But on zoning, if you look at a monopoly board, it has all these properties around it. When all them properties are full, you have one winner, and the rest are losers. Remember when all them properties are full, when you look at your zoning. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, well, that will close our public comments. The next item is the report from the chairman. I'll ask the Director of the Newton County Industrial Development Authority, Ms. Sarah Hall, if she'll come forward and make a presentation, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, great to see you tonight. Thank you for the time and the opportunity. It is time again to discuss our upcoming Job Fest. And so Job Fest is this upcoming October the 30th, and each of you received tonight a couple of handouts. We each gave you a media kit, and inside your media kit, you will have flyers. You also have discussion points, and discussion points, as well as comments and things to place on social media, FAQs. And we just asked that you put this out for your constituents, put this out for others, if we can provide you many things. And then also, each of you got a T-shirt from the newly branded Georgia Piedmont Technical College, where the facility is going to be held. So we asked that you wear it in your social media. We asked that you put it out there, and encourage our citizens to go to the job fair. As you see on the screen here, we just announced last night of some of the participants that will actually be present at the job fair. So all the way stretching across our county, from Beaver Manufacturing in Mansfield, to McKinley, Michelin, Piedmont Hospital, Vressens, here in the city of Covington, to Takeda out at Stanton Springs. So we're really excited. It's going to be from 10:00 to 4:00 all day. And then also, if they're not your constituent, or someone you know is not necessarily looking for a job, we're going to be holding classes all throughout the day, thinking about interview skills, resume readiness. We're also going to have partners from Imani's Closet, the Goodwill, to provide a free professional dress. And so we will have a lot of opportunities out at the college that day. And then lastly, I want to mention that we are starting a new initiative that I mentioned to you during budget season regarding getting people GEDs. And so we have a formal location in Porterdale starting. So thank you to Mayor Patterson. Thank you to the team down there. And we actually have 11 people that have signed up for this first cohort that's completely free. And so we want to make sure that more people are going to have this opportunity as it pilots out. We will also be taking people here at the Job Fest. Again, please, I just ask that you share this far and wide, and we're very excited. And if you'd like to join us on Job Fest Day, we would love to see you. It's the day before Halloween, and jobs aren't scary. So thank y'all so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Item number six is the report from our county manager, Mr. James Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I would like to invite Fire Chief and Mr. Franklin up to, to do a fire proclamation for fire awareness month.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, and Madam Chairman. Today, I'm going to leave my time over to educational specialist, James Franklin, for the proxy mix.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to read this proclamation to you. Please, please bear with me. It says, "Whereas Newton County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Newton County and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes today, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or even explode. And whereas the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, an improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risk in the home and the community. And whereas Newton County Fire Service is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities.
Thank you so much. We appreciate our fire services, not only this week, but every day. We appreciate all you do. Thank you.
And also, I want to give a special recognition, Mr. James Franklin. We did earn an award from the Insurance Commission for the State of Georgia that he did apply for, and we did receive that award on last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item seven, our consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Now we'll move to item number eight, our new business. The first item would be consideration of budget transfer. Presenter is Ms. Brittany White. She's our Finance Director.
Good evening. Tonight before you, you have a budget transfer for two new positions for the Public Defender's Office that will come from the contingency from new position line item in the FY '26 budget. I will just make one note here on the spreadsheet with the new positions, that one of them mentions it's part-time, but they're both full-time. So are there any questions on this?
Do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item number nine, consideration of fire services. Chief Turner.
Good evening again. Other day, we were asking for board approval to allow us to make a transition in our reporting software. Currently, we are using three different platforms, and we are trying to bridge all those platforms into one platform for better data retrieval, and also that easily downloads into the state's website. Do we have any questions about it?
Okay, do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Chief. We'll move to item number 10, consideration of parks and recreation. Presenter would be Dwayne Mask, Parks and Recreation Director.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. So we're looking for approval tonight to, Amazon approached us about wanting to get involved in the community and do a sponsorship for us. So our, we were looking at sponsoring our last two special events for the year, which is our Fall Festival in November, and our Christmas event in December. So that's what we're asking tonight, is just approval to be able to accept that sponsorship.
Okay, do we have a, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Item 11. Our presenter would be Chester Clegg, Transportation Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item I have is a request for a change order to add $79,157.50 to the contract we have with Wright Brothers Construction, who are building the, replacing the bridge at Yellow River and Brown Bridge Road. The contractor doing construction has found asbestos pipe in the ground and on the bridge, and we had, it requires a hazmat company to come in and safely remove it and dispose of it properly. The $79,000 is about, was less than 1% of the $10 million project.
Do we have a motion? Second? Discussion? Commissioner Long?
I just want to point out with all these things that we're approving, that all this stuff is budgeted, and it's in our revenues that we're asking for.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it might seem like we're just saying, oh, yeah, money, money, money. But all these things are a formality or a budget.
Thank you.
The next time I have is, we're proceeding with the intersection improvements.
I don't think we voted. We did not. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. The next time I have is Brown Bridge Road at Crowell Road. It's an intersection improvement project, and there are about 32 parcels that are affected, that we need to acquire some right-of-way. Most of it's a little small amount. One is the Five Acre Track at the Oaks. But we got two proposals, and the cheapest one was $206,000 from JMT. And we're proposing to contract with JMT to help us acquire those right-of-way parcels.
That again is the splash. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Second? We have a tie with the second? Okay. Commissioner Long. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Item 13 will be presented by Brittany White, James Brown.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We're following back up on the opioid settlement, and this is going to be a recommendation from, from the opioid committee on some of the distribution of those funds. We had to make one correction as we were still talking with the Sheriff's Office. So the action, the request for tonight is for $125,000 on $165,000. And we'll come back at the next board meeting with the request for the sheriff. Let me do a little, a small presentation to give, to give the board a little background of what the distribution is going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So back in 2008, Newton County joined the jurisdiction of several settlements, lawsuits, including the following, as you can see on the board. And they established the opioid fund committee was approved by the board on June 3rd. And since then, we have gone through several iterations and meetings to, to come up with some, the benefits of those funds to help the citizens of Newton County that's suffering through this epidemic. And the allocation that the, the recommendation for the, from the board was from Piedmont Hospital for a one-time allocation of $50,000. Emergency Management, which is EMA for the county, of a one-time allotment of $25,000, and Viewpoint, a $50,000 annual allocation until funds are exhausted. And the breakdown for the opioid committee was for the distribution of the, excuse me, these doors will provide a, excuse me, the one-time allocation of $50,000 for a secluded doors designated for the care of the emergency department at the hospital. Those doors will be provided for a safety control environment for the patients and behavioral health crisis, reduce the risk of injury to patients, nurses, and staff, support de-escalation and stabilization while maintaining dignity and privacy, insurance, compliance, and recommendation standards for care and behavioral health in emergencies. The management, emergency management, what they're going to do is supply Narcan in all county buildings. So it's going to be 240 kits and 48 cabinets, and also train employees while, will be conducted by EMA at no additional cost. We'll also supply it to 16 buildings as stated, four parks, four community centers, the convenience centers that we have as well, the Sheriff's Office, and all the fire stations, all 12 fire stations. For viewpoint health, the $50,000 will be utilized in ordering and securing and administering the opioid, antagonist, excuse me, thank you, to residents of Newton County with preceding opioid for disorder on a daily basis while their treatment is ongoing, individual counseling and group counseling. Is any questions?
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, James, thank you for that very good presentation. And I think, I was on the board when we started talking about opioids, and the fact that how many people were being affected by that particular drug, and how you could get it from prescriptions. It was just a lot of people who were not intentionally, but were becoming addicted by that particular drug. And so the, actually, I want to say the people who decided to take them to court, the government, take them to court, and get money back to help these, help the counties in this drug addiction that was really unintentional. And so I think this is a good start. But I had thought that we were going to get more money than what we have from, from those people because of the, how big the, I guess, the settlement was. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Brittany, are these, these allocations auditable? I mean, are they, are these, the class action, is there, was there a mandate from the judge that these would be audible type correlations? Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. It is now time to move into our zoning public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Appleweight, if you'd come forward. Present our first zoning, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening again to the Board of Commissioners. Our first petition this evening is a rezoning case. It is REZ 25-000008. There's a companion case, which is a future land use map amendment, FLU 25-00001. It's located at 6610 Highway 20, tax ID number 002031. It's on 9.26 acres, and a future land use map that was recently approved by the board is rural residential. The existing zoning is neighborhood commercial, and the proposed zoning is agricultural residential. It is in the emerging suburban character area, which supports the flume that was proposed, as well as the zoning being proposed. It's in the South River watershed, Commissioner District 2. Our owner and petitioner today is Brianna Scott, and the proposed user intent is to rezone the property from CN to AR to subdivide for family conveyance. So it is essentially a downzoning. And just a brief history, on 7/125, the Board of Commissioners, they approved the future land use map amendment from commercial to rural residential. they approved the future land use map amendment from commercial to rural residential. And on nine-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition for the rezoning, REZ twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-eight, by a vote of four-zero, and there was no public opposition. Just a brief site plan analysis. So the subject site, it's on Highway twenty and on the west side of Barrington Lane. It's currently one single-family residence on the property. It's almost ten acres, and their intent is to split it into four tracts at one acre, one-point-two acres, one acre, one-point-two acres, and the remaining will be six-point-eight-five acres respectively. The existing home is currently on the six-point-eight acre tract, and the rest of the tracts will be used for family members through a family conveyance. There is an existing entrance or exit onto Highway twenty, and the proposed minor plat meets or exceeds all of the minimum setbacks for the twenty-twenty UDO. And this is just the concept showing what they're proposing. So you have the entire parcel and the four lots, and the house that's existing will remain on the large lot. So this is just a close-up of it, what they're proposing to do, so they'll have a total of four lots when they're done. And in conclusion, staffs have the opinion that the proposed rezoning to AR, agricultural residential, may be appropriate based on similar zonings and uses in the nearby area. The rezoning will be consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan. Recommended conditions. Should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved agricultural residential in conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following: A, submit a minor plat subdividing parcel zero-zero-two, zero-three-one into four tracts; and B, submit appropriate plans and plaits to be reviewed and approved by Development Services, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, the Water Authority, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation, and G dot as applicable. And this is a survey that was submitted. It is dated, but the current survey will be replacing this. So we have an aerial view of where it's located, out on Highway twenty in Barrington Lane. Current zoning is neighborhood commercial. The flume was already amended to rural residential. Watershed is South River, Commissioner District Two. It is an emergent suburban character area. And these are just site photos we have of the entrance and, of course, the property currently. The house is not visible from the road. It's set back in from the road. But these are just highway, side pictures along Highway twenty. This is, of course, going on Barrington Lane. And if there are any questions for staff? If not, this is a public hearing, Madam Chair.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. There'll be a total of ten minutes to speak in support.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brianna Scott. I'm the owner and petitioner for this rezoning request, and we are excited to embark on this journey as a family. We are expecting to convey the tracts, as mentioned, to my parents and my siblings. I have two sisters, for their, for their future families. My grandmother also lives with me currently, so she'll be moving in with my parents. And we wanted to just have a, a family experience and live in community together, and we were inspired by a family that lives about a mile down the road who's accomplished this. They live on their property with all of their children and siblings, and it's a very beautiful thing to pursue, I think. So we're hoping that by the approval of this rezoning, we'll be able to move forward, and my parents can begin actually building their home.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishes, wishing to speak in favor? Okay, at that, at this time, that part of the public hearing will be closed. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve REZ two-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-eight with condition, staff conditions.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Long?
This young lady's going to have a baby in the time it's taken for us to get this done. Okay, this is something I just want to mention for our UDO. Let's look at something like this. It should not take nine months for this poor family to get something like this done in, in red tape and government. So that's, that's something I want to look at with the UDO when we're doing these type situations. I mean, literally, it's been nine months for this particular family. So just want to bring that up because that, that's crazy.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. That was unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our second petition this evening is a conditional use permit. It is CUP twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-one. The proposed user intent is to develop a multi-tenant retail center, which will include a drive-through restaurant and retail spaces. So initially, when this went to the Planning Commission, the, a C store with gas pumps was also included. The applicant has since opted to withdraw the C store with the gas pumps, or the gas station, and just proceed with the retail spaces. So even though you'll see the strike throughs going through because we wanted the board to see what went before, but we're going to present also the updated content. So this is located at twelve-nine-five-five Brown Bridge Road on two-point-zero-four-seven acres. This is what used to be the Walgreens at the corner of Brown Bridge and Salem Road. Tax ID zero-zero-one-three-one-two-zero. Future land use map is a development node. Current zoning is highway commercial and the general commercial, and it's also in the Salem overlay tier three. It's in the live-work corridor character area, which supports the flume and the current zoning. It is in the yellow and South River watersheds, Commissioner District Two. The owner is Full Circle Alliance LLC, and our petitioner today is Ishan Hakini. So the brief history, in two thousand and six, the board approved the rezoning, REZO six-zero-one-four, which rezoned aside from single-family residential to its current zoning of highway commercial in order to develop the Walgreens. There was a condition one B, which requires a conditional use permit for an auto-service station and a drive-through or a drive-in restaurant. And that is why we're here today, because that condition was put in place back then that they had to come back before the board for a cup if they wanted to do either one of those uses. So the auto-service station, like I said, applicant has withdrawn that, so we are here today for the drive-through, the drive-in restaurant. In September of this year, a community meeting was held. The applicant explained his proposal to remodel the Walgreens building into a multi-tenant retail center, and some of these uses included, well, no longer does, no longer includes the C store, but there was Dunkin' Donuts that was proposed, tropical smoothie cafe locals at Dunkin' restaurants, such as a Mexican bagel or breakfast shop, clothing store. Citizens did respond. We had a very interactive meeting. They were opposed to the C store and gas station, which, you know, the applicant has since withdrawn. They were opposed to Dunkin' Donuts or fast food restaurants, or, you know, storefront funeral home or church. There were concerns for trash in the area, and they desired to have a walkable community, which is the intent of the Salem overlay. There was a desire for development that catered to children in the counties, and some of the uses that were proposed by the citizens, bowling alley, a Dave and Buster's, quality restaurants, such as a rock and crab, or Caribbean, or Thai food, or something like an Einstein Bros. Bagels, a smoothie place, or fitness studio, laundromat. And then this is just a handwritten list that was submitted to us from the community, which goes over some of the uses we just listed. So the Planning Commission in September this year, they recommended denial of the cup by a vote of four-zero. And some of the questions the board has were, were there any concrete restaurant concepts, you know, as voiced by the citizens? And also there was a question of if the applicant was going to do a multi-tenant retail center without a convenience store with a pump. So they did ask that question if he was willing to not have the convenience store with the gas pumps. So some of the opposition that came, they cited things like economic value and voiced a desire for quality health food options. And of course, applicant responded, he had no official tenants at that time of the Planning Commission meeting, or the community meeting, I should say. He had communicated a potential smoothie and bagel restaurant, and, you know, another thing he implied was that the Salem Road project would help alleviate any traffic concerns that residents raised, and that the Department of Natural Resources, the EPD, Department of Agriculture will also review the project for environmental concerns, and that would have been if the gas station was going there. And he also indicated that he would have to have further conversation with the developer regarding the multi-tenant retail center without the gas store and pumps. On nine-twenty-six, the applicant did amend the conditional use permit to request just a drive-through and drive-in restaurant, and has excluded a convenience store with the gas pumps. So the drive-through, drive-in restaurant, it'll still be a part of the intended multi-tenant retail space. So we have the old concept plan, which initially showed the canopy for the convenience store and the pumps in the yellow here, and then this is the existing Walgreens building. This was the existing layout for the retail uses in there. So that was part of the old plan. And we'll go over the new plan in a few minutes. So the new site plan analysis, so it's a two-acre lot on the south side of Brown Bridge Road in Salem. So the vacant Walgreens building, which is briefly used for commercial, and there's also commercial uses in the immediate surrounding area. The site plan is based on an updated survey to show how the property will look after the Salem Road widening project, so he has accommodated for that. The existing building is fourteen thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet. There are currently eighty parking spaces, including the addition of new rotated parking spaces. There is an existing drive-through on the south side of the building, which will be relocated to the east side of the building. And there are eight tenant spaces now, as shown on the new floor plan, and they vary from approximately twelve-hundred square feet all the way up to twenty-eight-hundred square feet, I believe, is the highest one. So twelve-twenty is the long, so that's the range of the potential retail spaces inside. The proposed colors and materials will remain the same as the Walgreens, which is in compliance with the Salem overlay requirements, architectural requirements. It will be the same brick and stucco that they have there. And the proposed site plan, it does meet or exceed minimum building setbacks for twenty-twenty UDO. And we're going to show close-ups of these here, but those are the proposed. So here we go. So the new concept plan, this is the current building. We've got Brown Bridge roiled here. No, I think that is Salem and Brown Bridge, Brown Bridge, yeah. It's kind of oriented the other way. So, but basically, the proposed drive-through will be here now. It's currently on the south side. This is a new floor plan that was submitted, how he's proposing to divide up the tenant spaces to have a total of eight. So this is the proposed elevations. So he will be making improvements to the building. However, it will still be in conformance with the architectural features of the Salem overlay and will not vary significantly from the materials that were used in the current Walgreens there. So this is just various angles of the elevations, side and front. So the applicable section would be section five-one-zero dash two-hundred for restaurant, drive-through, or drive-in restaurant. It is included in your packet, so I won't read through. And in conclusion, applicant has amended the conditional use permit request to a drive-through or drive-in restaurant only, and has excluded a convenience store with gas pumps. So the drive-in and drive-through restaurant will still be a part of the intended multi-tenant retail space. An applicant has made in discussion with various potential tenants that align with the community's wishes. So potential tenants would include from restaurants at Caribbean or Mexican, a bagel shop, a breakfast shop, or a smoothie place. He's also looking at a clothing store, medical office, and a bank. So staffs have the opinion the proposed drive-through restaurant is appropriate at this location since it will meet the requirements of the ordinance. So again, all of the other uses listed are by right uses. They're just by right retail uses. And the only thing he had to come back to the board for, for a conditional use permit was for the drive-in, drive-through restaurant. Recommended conditions. Should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for a drive-through and drive-in restaurant, conditional and subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in a letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. So one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, to the site plan and legal description received by the department on September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. Unless otherwise noted herein, compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards: A, all conditions from REZO six-zero-one-four shall remain in effect. B, provide satisfactory ingress and egress to be approved by the transportation engineer, and G dot, since one of the roads is a state route. C, overnight parking of commercial vehicles on the lot is prohibited. D, all roofs shall be neutral in color and must blend with all the roofs in the area, subject to the approval of Development Services. E, submit appropriate plans or plaits, including stormwater plan, to be reviewed and approved by Development Services, Public Works, Newton County Fire, the Water Authority, and Georgia Soil and Water Commission. F, obtain environmental health approval before the issuance of a business license, as applicable. And G, the following uses shall not be allowed: a tattoo parlor and a vape shop. So this is our updated survey. The, the, sorry, the canopy is no longer there for the gas station and the pumps. So it's just going to be the retail space. This is our aerial view, so we've got Brown Bridge and Salem Road, just to get you oriented. The Walmart is here, of course, Publix, and you have the Chick-fil-A and so on across the road, and the Zaxby's, et cetera, below. So the entire area is zoned commercial in some form, whether it's highway or general commercial. And that would be the pink and the dark red areas. It is in the Salem overlay tier three, which is the town center overlay. Future land use map is a development node. Yellow River and South River, just barely, just a small area of the South River. It's a majority Yellow River, Commissioner District Two. And this is, these are the current pictures of what the Walgreens looks like now. Well, you know, we're all familiar with, and just remind you what the updated rendering will be. And if there are any questions for staff? If not, Madam Chair, this is a public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. There'll be a total of ten minutes to speak in support of the zoning.
Hey, good evening. My name is Ishan Hakani, and I am the developer for this project. I wanted to piggyback off what Ms. Shayna said and reiterate that from the last time that I came from the Planning Commission and also in the community meeting, we have listened to the community and taken their feedback and removed completely the convenience store and the fuel pumps from the project. So now we currently have the Walgreens drive-through in the rear of the building, but we want to see if we could move it to the side of the building to better fit our layout that we're going for with storefronts both on Brown Bridge and Salem Road. We hope to bring more of, so I've gotten interest from tenants similar to, like Dunkin' Donuts. Golden Crust has shown interest, the Jamaican spot. Also, other bagel and coffee concepts have also shown interest, and I think this would be a great location for something like a Dunkin' Donuts or something like a coffee or a bagel concept in the drive-through. So, yeah, I think, I think that's it. Any questions?
Okay. Would you like to reserve the rest of your time?
Yes.
Okay. So anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this project? This zoning? Okay, well, that part of the public hearing will be closed then. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. There'll be a total of ten minutes. Please come forward, there'll be a total of ten minutes to speak.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Kim LaCheeze. I spoke in opposition at the, the last time, the last hearing. We already have a Dunkin' Donuts, it may not be in Newton County, but I don't see the purpose of having a Dunkin' Donuts right there at Brownbridge, when it's right there in the same plaza with the Food Depot on Salem Road. And I'm so glad that he removed the gas station, because I counted seventeen gas stations between Turner Lake, Kirkland, Crawl, and Salem. But when we're talking about fast food restaurants, could we just get more healthy options? We keep getting Burger Kings, McDonald's, Chipotle, Chick-fil-A. It's just that we want more healthy options here in Newton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Kim Shu. I'm speaking simply because on Facebook, we had this huge conversation about this particular development, and it was brought up that people in other districts don't come and fight for some of the other folks on the other side of the county. So, that's why I'm here. The one word that stuck out to me in this whole presentation was conceptual. And when we approve conceptual, we don't necessarily get what citizens actually want and need. So, you may wanna delay this a bit, so that the applicant can come and actually say what he wants to put here. Not just, I might put a Dunkin' Donuts, or I might put a Jamaican restaurant, but what are we actually going to get? Oftentimes, we get the bait and switch, because you approve it, but the next thing you know, we're gonna get a Burger King, we're gonna get a Zaxby's, we're full of chicken, we don't need any more chicken. Done. So, I would prefer to see an actual proposal of what's actually going to be here, that the citizens could get behind and support versus conceptual, just because it's allowed in the UDO, or you can actually do it because it says you can. So, I would encourage you, as the developer, to put a little more thought into this, and be more respectful of the citizens that live in this area, so that we can support you when you do come here. That's all.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Carla Daniels Hooper. Thank you so much for supporting District Three. I also agree that this is a time for us to work with the developer, the way that Commissioner Mason is doing already. This is the town center development. This is the time to get in at the very beginning, and not just think about what we want to do, but actually be intentional about what we want in that area. And I agree, we are so accustomed to the bait and switch, as she stated. If the developer really wants to partner with the community, give it some time, meet with us, meet with our commissioners, and let's really go after those restaurants and those services that we need. This area is now called a food desert. Most of Newton County is a food desert. That is not what you want your county to be known for. A food desert is an area that is underserved, impoverished, and the people do not have access to healthy foods. That is a public health nightmare. So, we are not looking for a fast food drive-through restaurant, thank you.
Is there anyone else? That portion is closed. You have eight minutes, I believe, left, if you'd like to speak.
Hey, so, I just wanted to say, one, I not only hear you guys, but I agree with a lot of what you guys are saying. I, I do agree that I need to work close to the community to make sure that there is a development here, that the community, that not only benefits the community, but the community is proud of as well. I have been working closely with Ms. Shayna and also Commissioner Mason to make sure that the tenants that we bring in the center complement the future of this intersection and this area. And when it comes to the unhealthy options, I, I've talked to a lot of members of this community, including Commissioner Mason, in that they don't want a fried chicken place here, right? They don't want a fried chicken place in this drive-through, and it's not our intention to bring something unhealthy in, or fried chicken place in this drive-through. And going back to the first lady that came up, I, about the Dunkin' Donuts. So, normally, these big companies, franchises like Dunkin' Donuts, they don't like going within two to three miles from each other. So, for me, I could put it in front of people as a developer, and for them, they come and tell me, so I choose who I put it in front of, right? So, I'm not gonna put it in front of, or I haven't put it in front of, and I won't, any fried chicken places or unhealthy places like that, because I know I wanna build something here that is longstanding, and also benefits the community as well. The reason that I'm trying to do this commu, this conditional use permit for a drive-through is, one, I think the car stacking along the thing would be, it's a beautiful site for a drive-through, and won't cause much congestion on the site. And also, there are, this is a perfect location for a quick grab for coffee, for a bagel, for something quick like that, while people are going to work, there's a lot of people moving on this road, so I see that desire here for the community for a coffee shop, a bagel shop, or some healthy alternative here for a quick grab and go. So, yeah, I think, I think that's it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say thank you to Ishan for coming out and having the community meeting here. We have very few residents that showed up, but I think those that did show up were very, very concerned about this particular area, and how we move forward, and how we want this particular area to look and to be. And so, thank you for doing that. Thank you for the additional follow-up conversations that you've had with Ms. Applewhite, as well as with myself, just from having the conversations with you. I can truly see that you do wanna make sure that we have the best, and you hear what the community is wanting for this particular project. I know you have even shared with me that you have some roots here in Covington. You know, your parents had a business here, and, and so now, you wanna make sure that this is a community that is desirable. And just from having the conversations with you, I don't think you are someone who wants to come in and bring something that this community doesn't want. And so, I truly believe through the conversations and you stating that you wanted to continue to work with myself, we're in the process of also working with our economic development team to see exactly what we can go in and say, this is who we want to be here, versus someone just coming here. And so, I think you've done a great job, I think you've done your due diligence, and I think you really wanna make sure that this is not a bait and switch project, and that you really do care, and you wanna make sure that this is a project that this community can be proud of as they drive by, and your willingness to even wanna continue to work with me and our economic development team. So, with that being said, I move that we approve CUP two-five dash zero-zero, zero-zero, one-one with staff-approved conditions.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, that passed.
Four-zero.
Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next petition this evening is also a conditional use permit, it is CUP twenty-five dash zero-zero, zero-zero, one-two. Proposed user intent is to continue the operation of an existing tree service business. This particular petition had a sunset clause where they were to come back before the board within a specific time, and so that's the purpose of us being here today. It is located at forty-two, forty-eight Highway two-twelve on forty-seven point six-one acres, tax ID is zero-zero, one-eight, zero-two-three. Future land use map is agricultural forestry and parks, recreational, and conservation. Zoning is agricultural, it is in the emerging suburban character area, located in the South River watershed in Commissioner District One, and our owner and petitioner is Tiffany Fuller. Just a brief history, so, back in July of twenty-twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners approved the Flume Amendment to the future land use map to agricultural forestry, and in December of twenty-twenty-one, the Board approved petitions to rezonate it, REZ twenty-one dash zero-zero, zero-zero, eight, and a conditional use permit, CUP twenty-one dash zero-zero, zero-zero, six, to rezonate the property to agriculture and to allow the operation of a tree service business. One of the conditions on that rezoning case was condition one-B, I'm sorry, on the conditional use permit case. It was condition one-B, which limited the conditional use permit to two years, and required a new conditional use permit to continue the operation of the tree service business. So, the business has continued to be in operation past the twelve-twenty-three expiration date. So, in September of this year, September twenty-third, Planning Commission recommended approval of the current conditional use permit by a vote of four-zero. One citizen spoke in favor of the petition, and there was no public opposition. So, the site plan analysis, so again, it's forty-seven acres on the north side of Highway two-twelve, it is surrounded by residential and nearby commercial properties. There's an existing home, a pole barn, a shop, and a grill shed, and the pole barn is used for the business, which is the tree service. The proposed twenty-five by thirty-six barn for small farm equipment, and the subject property is used also for a single-family residence and to operate a tree service business. And this is a concept plan of the layout as provided by the applicant, which shows the barn and the area where the sawmill business is, the tree service business is. This is just a close-up, so it shows the grill shed, this is the home, proposed barn that everyone wanted to build, and of course, the shop where the current tree service business is. So, the applicable section would be Section five-one-zero dash six-five-five for a tree service, which is included in your packet, so I won't read through. And in conclusion, the purpose of the conditional use permit request is to allow the existing tree service business to continue operation. Per the previous conditional use permit from twenty-twenty-one, in the conditions, it was only valid for two years, and thus, the property and business is out of compliance and must be corrected. Staff recommends approval to continue the operation of the tree service business. Recommended conditions, so should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for a conditional use permit for a tree service business, conditional and subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with stipulations and offerings contained in letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following, A, maintain an active business license for the tree service business. B, the conditional use permit shall be valid for as long as the business is in operation. C, no building or construction allowed on a property without the applicable permits. So, it's just those three conditions. This is the aerial view of the parcel, again, roughly forty-seven acres. Current zoning is agricultural, in the dark green. The flume is agricultural forestry. It's in the South River watershed, Commissioner District One. And these are just site photos, so you have from Georgia Highway two-twelve, that is the entrance in, and this is just to show that the activities are now visible from the highway, it is behind the tree line buffer. And these are just sites, current photos of what the site looks at, so they have kept up the property and maintained all the requirements for the business. And these are just additional photos of the site and the business. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, Madam Chair, this is a public hearing as well.
We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the zoning, please come forward. There'll be a total of ten minutes for anyone who wishes to speak in support of this project, this zoning, excuse me.
Hello, how are you all tonight? I'm Stevie Fuller, the one that works there, or run the, on the tree service. We went with the fifty acres there, so we could have our vehicles there, 'cause if we had less than ten acres, we couldn't have commercial vehicles. So, we didn't, we, we won't have any, we have that part solved now, but now we just need to get our conditional use permit. I didn't mean to go past the conditional use permit that I had, but I was under the impression, as long as I kept my business license up, I'd be good to go, so. I'm sorry about that, but yeah, I would just like to get that straightened out. We don't have any customers come to the yard or anything like that, it's just, we just park the trucks there, is all we do.
Okay, would you like to reserve your time?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak in favor of the zoning? Well, that part of the public hearing will be closed. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the zoning? Okay, that part of the public hearing will be closed. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit, CUP two-five dash zero-zero, zero-zero, one-two, with staff recommendations.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
All.
Okay, thank you. That was unanimous, that passed, thank you. Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our final petition this evening is also rezoning, is REZ twenty-five dash zero-zero, zero-zero, five. It's located at eight-twenty-five Davis Ford Road and Davis Ford Road, tax ID are parcel zero-one-oh-six, zero-zero-five, and zero-one-oh-six, zero-zero-five-eight. The parcel size is eleven-point-two-three acres total. Our future land use map is rural residential, current zoning is agricultural, and the proposed zoning is rural estate. The character area is low-density rural residential, which supports the flume and the proposed zoning. Watershed is in the Bear Creek, this is in Commissioner District One. Owner is Clayton Johnson, petitioner is Mark Patrick, and the proposed use and intent is to rezonate the property from A to RE to subdivide for a family conveyance. And as a brief history, on nine-twenty-three, twenty-five, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning by a vote of four-zero, and there was no public opposition. The site plan analysis, again, the subject site is located on Davis Ford Road, it has a single-family residence and three sheds currently there. The adjacent parcel of zero-one, zero-six, zero-zero-five-eight contains a barn and a shed. So, essentially, is they're gonna maintain two parcels total, but they're just reconfiguring the boundary lines. So, the proposed minor plot shows a reconfigured property and the lines, as shown here in the concept plan, so one tract will be four-point-one-six acres, and the second one will be seven-point-zero-two acres, which is in compliance with the Bear Creek watershed minimums of two acres. It contains the existing house, four sheds, and one barn, so excluding the shed in front of the existing home, the proposed minor plot meets or exceeds all of the minimum building setbacks. This is just a close-up of what we were looking at, so again, they're just reconfiguring the boundary lines to, you know, it's gonna be the same two lots total. So, in conclusion, staff have the opinion that the proposed rezoning from rural es, to rural estate may be appropriate based on the similar zonings and uses in the nearby area. The rezoning will be consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan. Our recommended conditions, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved rural estate, conditional- it should be approved rural estate, conditional and subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following, A, submit minor plats subdividing parcels 0106005 and 0106005A into two tracts. B, submit appropriate plans and plots to be reviewed and approved by the Development Services Department, Public Works, the Fire Services, Water Authority, Georgia's Salt and Water, and GDOT as applicable. C, bring any non-compliant accessory structures into compliance. So this is what it currently looks like now. So we do have, you know, two parcels total and they're going to reconfigure it as shown previously. Current zoning is A, Flume Rural Residential. Watershed is Bear Creek, Commissioner District 1. Character area is low-density rural residential. And these are site photos from the street, David Ford Road, and it's a photo of the home that is existing there currently. And if there are no questions, Madam Chair, this is also a public hearing.
Okay, at this time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this zoning, please come forward. I have a total of 10 minutes to speak in support.
I'm Mark Patrick, engineer surveyor. We surveyed the property. I'm representing Mr. Clay Johnson. It's a really nice piece of property, perfectly for a residence and another residence. The original geometry was such that Mr. Johnson has a cutout parcel for his original tract that's a little smaller. This will give Mr. Johnson a large tract and his son another large tract. They're moving from South Georgia to build their future home here in Newton County, which I think will be really, really nice for everybody, including Mr. Johnson, of course. And Mr. Johnson's here if he wants to speak. Is that okay? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Clay Johnson, owner of the property. And the purpose here is to convert about four acres here to my son who currently resides in Statesboro. He went to college there, met a girl, got married, and never came back. He is wanting to come back now and I'm trying to get this property to him. The ulterior motive here is to have grandchildren, his next-door neighbors. So I would appreciate it if he could support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speak in favor? Well, that part of the public hearing is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? We'll close that part of the public hearing too. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve REZ 25-00009, with staff recommendations.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This time, if we could go back to 13A, which is the appointment of Ms. Susan Nolly as our county clerk. Do I have a motion on that?
Come on.
All in favor?
All.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, and 13B is Fairview Park Resolution. Do we have a motion on that? You want to read it? You want to read that?
Bear with me a second, let me pull up. And rather than reading the whole thing, I'll, I'll read the title and then I'll summarize it. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, acknowledging its ownership of 12.1 plus or minus acres of real property commonly referred to as the Fairview Community Park. Without reading the whole thing, back in May of 2010, the Newton County bought the 12.1 acres from SunTrust Bank. It had apparently been subjected to a foreclosure sale. That property is commonly referred to today as Fairview Community Park. Over the years, there has been some confusion as to the ownership of the property. And what this resolution does is resolves that Newton County, Georgia holds fee simple title of the property and that Newton County, Georgia is aware of no other person or entity, including without limitation, the Fairview Community or the Fairview Estates Homeowners Association that holds any ownership of the property.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll motion if you'll go ahead and talk about that business.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. It, it was my understanding and how I learned more information was I was coming up here to the horseshoe and the lady stopped me. And the question that they were talking to me about was that the fact that somebody had got, had got shot or killed over there, I think a few years back, and that the homeowners association had to pay, I think she said they wanted a million dollars, but they ended up with a hundred thousand dollars that they had to pay out. And so I guess the question that I'm, that I'm asking, if that was our property and then why were they paying all that money out through the homeowners association? I guess, I guess I'm kind of direct that question to Patrick.
So I'll do the best I can to answer it. My understanding is that there was a shooting in the park a couple of years ago and that the shooting victim's family filed a lawsuit. And the lawsuit was brought against the Fairview Estates Homeowners Association. They did not sue the county. I think there were probably some reasons they didn't sue the county. As you probably are all aware, we have the benefit of something called sovereign immunity that probably would have shielded us from any litigation or any liability as a result of that shooting. And it is also my understanding, now I can't confirm this with any detail, since we weren't involved in the lawsuit, I don't know exactly what happened, but it is my understanding that the Fairview Estates Homeowners Association paid the plaintiff something in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars to dismiss the lawsuit. Sitting in the chair in which I sit in, I don't know why they would have paid any money to, to resolve the lawsuit. I think if, not, no, I don't know what happened, but
Absolutely.
But knowing what little I know, I would have expected that that homeowners association would have defended the lawsuit by saying that's not our property. And I think it is a pretty easy thing to resolve the ownership of that property. I will tell you what we did is we had a title examination performed and confirmed that we did in fact own the property. One of the questions that was asked of us, asked of the county was that we provide a hold harmless agreement to the homeowners association that says, we will hold you harmless against any future lawsuits. As you are all aware, I recommend against that and I recommend against that for two reasons. First reason is that would be a gratuity if we're not receiving anything in exchange. A hold harmless agreement like that's pretty valuable and the county's prohibited from giving anything of value without receiving something back. So first of all, I think it would have been an unconstitutional gratuity for us to provide that hold harmless. The second problem is to give a hold harmless agreement like that could be interpreted as a waiver of our sovereign immunity. And this is a weird thing about sovereign immunity. You cannot waive your sovereign immunity. Only the General Assembly can waive the sovereign immunity given to counties. There's one small exception for that with respect to car, automobile insurance. You can waive your sovereign immunity by buying automobile insurance, but that only applies to car crashes. So because you can't waive your sovereign immunity, we can't really promise someone that will handle a lawsuit on your behalf if we would have had a sovereign immunity defense. So there's really two things that prohibit us from doing that, and those are those two things. So had, I, I will say, had the, the shooting victim's family sued the county, I think we would have probably been dismissed from the lawsuit based on sovereign immunity. So all of that is a short, is a long way of me saying, I think this resolution is the most we can lawfully give. It may or may not solve the problem that the Fairview Estates Homeowners Association has, but this is the most that I believe we can lawfully give.
Okay, just one last clarification. It was when it happened, the county's property.
Okay, that, that's my understanding, based on what I read about the shooting. I don't know that with any certainty.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Frank, should I vote with that motion?
Oh, we got a motion, a second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that motion passes, thank you. We'll go to item 14, that's alcohol beverage license, Brownbridge Quick Stop LLC, first reading licensee, Esmina Gawana, Gawana, 5961 Coral Road, Covington, Georgia 30016, and that's in District 3. Item 15 would be the public comments. This is time to allow the public to comment on open topics. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. If we have anyone that would like to speak?
Good evening, Board. I really didn't intend on speaking, but due to the resolution in the community that I live in, and I wasn't aware, one, that we didn't have insurance. So I guess I'm coming to the board because we're reviewing the UDO currently. And I need to know what is going to be updated in the UDO to safeguard us against HOAs that are deficient, because I agree with you. If this is not our property, why in the world did our HOA pay? And I have no recourse with this HOA. We barely meet the quorum because we have so many rentals in our subdivision. So trying to get the people that aren't quite right off the board is almost impossible. So we need the county, the BOC, to pay special attention to HOAs and what they're allowed to do. Because as a resident, that hundred thousand dollars I paid. And the other residents that are homeowners paid. And I'll be digging deeper into this Fairview Estates HOA.
Dave Norton of New Bern again. I looked at the first page on the PDF for the new, new UDO, and several times up here I've quoted, the purpose of the board is to promote and protect the health, safety, welfare of the citizens. In that, in line, it also says, and morals. In the new one, the word morals is not there. I know it's not the county's job to teach morals, but if we take it out, are we due for our next strip joint coming into Newton County because we no longer worry about morals? We need to worry about them. Or you do. And it was mentioned earlier, tattoos and vape shops not permitted. Why, that's something I've never asked and understood. Why are tattoo shops not permitted? How many in this room have a tattoo? Did you wear a mask because it's such a, so no one recognized you when you went in? Because it's such a bad place? I've never been in one. I don't have one. I don't know. That's just something, one of them things, old man worries about. All right, for past few years, I've been coming up here before this board, and I will say to my fellow neighbors that you have a board that listens. You may not get the answer you want. They may not agree with you, but they do listen. Thank you for that, all of you. And Shane has done left, thank Development Services also. Any questions I ever had got answered. For my neighbors in the rest of the county, the east side and the west side, work together. We seen that earlier tonight. Work together, you will get better results that way. One thing I thought about suggesting to my neighbors was set up your own little town if you don't like what's happening here. Someone mentioned to me earlier that we thought about doing that in District 3, doing our own little town, but they said we didn't have the tax base with the homes, just the homes. The town in New Bern has two, I think, yeah, right now they have two, three, four businesses and four, four businesses and a few hundred homes. They have their own town. They don't have a police force. They have a water system with a water tower for water. They have a lawn maintenance crew, but they don't have a road crew, any of that stuff. It can be done. If South Fulton can do it, you can do it. District 5 would have a nice little town over there called Brick Store, and you could run your county or city limits right up to social circle. And so y'all have a good evening and it was nice working with y'all. I learned a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Collins and I live in the Fairview Estates Homeowners Association subdivision, Fairview Estates Community, and I'm a part of the homeowners association. It's unfortunate that they got rid of Department of Education because knowledge is power. We have insurance. We have had insurance. The homeowners association, the community did not pay for that lawsuit. This is the way it went. We were interviewed by the insurance company. Those of you who know how it works, okay, the insurance company had an attorney and the attorney decided that they would err on the side of caution. We had nothing to do with it. We fought against it. There was nothing we could do. Therefore, the insurance company we had no longer, or did not renew our policy. So we had to pay three times the amount. We have a board that's very active, very committed, and we are there and open for everyone. I thank you all for listening to us all the years we fought for a fair view behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you.
While I'm here, why not? Kim Shu again. I just wanted to address the UDO real quickly. I was on one of those citizen board advisors to meet with the gentleman who was here earlier presenting. I didn't see one single thing that our, our people in our meeting represented anywhere in that UDO revision. If anything, I just saw our current UDO repackaged and maybe updated a little bit to look a little prettier. So as we go through the next six months, I don't know what you got to do to get there, but the current, what I saw from his presentation is not what this county wants. It's not what the citizens have sat and spent their time working with him and others to say what we want. It is a repackaged, regurgitated existing, and I have no idea what we're paying him, but I can tell you right now, pay me a whole lot less and it'll be a whole lot better. Because we're not getting what we asked for. So as you go through the next six months, and I saw March being the adoption of our new UDO, here's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see a document that says, here's what the citizens asked for, and here's where the UDO represents that. Here's what we have to do because of state law requires us to do it, and here's how we're going to manage that. Otherwise, our growth is going to be unbridled. We're going to continue to see things we don't want. Everybody here, I've heard rental, 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 rental is a problem. And I think the current UDO that I saw this afternoon is actually more in favor of the developers than it is our citizens. So I would encourage this board to really take a hard look. And if that means you have to have more meetings, if that means you have to bring those consultants back in here and do it again, do it right and do it so that it benefits everyone and what we want to see here. Otherwise, why do it and why pay for it? That's all.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak tonight? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak tonight?
Carla Daniels Cooper. I also was in those sessions with her as well and I was shocked to read through the UDO and I was up to ten o'clock last night. I felt like I needed to go to law school to understand it. Thank you for those of you today who said, "This is for the citizens." When I saw words that said, "This will be more flexible for the developers, the developers," I was confused. I thought the UDO was for Newton County residents, our neighbors. I also agree that we need to show what are the main issues for our county and be able to show how the UDO addresses them. Because right now, I think we're going to get lost in the details of a five hundred page document. One thing that concerns me is that not only have we hired consultants who are losing the pulse of the community, I think we're losing exactly what we said that we need for each of our different districts. One of the things that we emphasize is that all of the districts are not the same. We cannot approach the UDO in a blanket approach. I was concerned that I could not recognize the different districts within the proposed plan. We said to the consultants, for example, District Three cannot be treated like District One and District Two. District Three, the west side, is overcrowded. And I'm concerned that we're going to lose the limits to the crowding, to the excessive gas stations. There's so many practical things that are not addressed in this UDO right now. And I could even tell that you guys are a little confused when you were reading it. And here's the thing. That UDO is still allowing overlays that define areas that reflect twenty years ago. For example, the Salem Road overlay, Almond Road overlay, that should no longer be high density definition. We are overcrowded. That is clear. We need new definitions for those overlays. I think that we need to bring the citizens back together. You guys hear from us again. And as she said, not only highlight what the citizens need, but also those major areas that we all have identified and make sure we can go apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and show that the UDO is addressing those major categories. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, I'm, yes, I live in Westfield Village, which is directly behind the Kroger on Salem. When I closed on my house November the fourteenth, twenty twenty twenty-two, Porty Homes told us that it will be all homeowners. I'm in Phase One, which is McKenzie and Kirkland, which has a drainage issue. But Phase Two is mostly renters because they allow so many investors to come in and buy those homes. And now you have more renters within the community than you have homeowners. And so that's a big concern for me. And eventually, I'm going to be like the man over here. I'm going to put my five bedroom house up for sale and move to Henry County because I'm spending most of my money in Henry County and Alpharetta anyway.
Is there anyone else?
Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two. As you know, in the past, I've been cleaning cemeteries off on King's birthday. Okay, I ran into a little problem this time. I got a bunch of tools that I had got from Laura Berry when they started work on the cousin's school. I need to get them back to somebody. I tried to contact Laura Riley today and I wasn't able to get in touch with her. I did talk to Laura Berry last week and she told me that the tools and so forth was a charitable type thing. So I know, I know that, you know, we used, used to keep them over there at the cousin's school, but I need to make sure that there's someplace over there that we can put them, house them or someplace. So just pass the word along. I'm still planning on doing a cemetery this, this will be next year. Yep. Help holds out. Thank you.
We'll have her call you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? The public comments will be closed. Now we'll go to the board comments. Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Cooper?
No comment other than basically no calls out my being there, but actually going to work with the county, so it's required not dead tonight. And I would just want to thank, thank that they're on track for keeping the public out today.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the comment that I have is one that I've had, that I have stated before. It's about power layout. It's the fact that not once but twice, the chemicals are either caught on fire, I don't know what happened to them, but we got a lot of smoke and chemicals over in our area and the fact that our schools had to close down for several day, well, a few days, several days, first time and also the second time. It's my understanding that at our hospital here in Newton, that there's a lot of people that come in respiratory issues. They don't know, even in Rockdale, the people who are kind of monitoring that, what are the long-term issues that we have from there? We don't know the damage to the properties here in Newton that it possibly could have caused to our property owners. And the only thing that I'm seeing is, is that other counties represent them and who experience what we experience, they are having to pay them for the extra people they had to have at the hospital. And I know for a fact, because I had to go there one time myself prior month, and it's full. People are coughing and going on and all that stuff. And it's not fair, I think, to the citizens of Newton County that we are paying for in some way or some extent, other people, by companies, billion dollar companies that are causing a lot of sicknesses in our county. You know about ethylene oxide? You know that there's several suits and there's going to be a few millionaires here in Newton County because they say it didn't cause leukemia and stuff, but yes, it does. You know about Guardian Automotive? You know that they got a big machine, a future machine that's sucking the oil out of the roads in the people's homes and they got machines sending people home, still sucking the poison out of people's houses. And I'm just saying this, we can no longer sit back and just say, "Well, it's their problem." But they live here in Newton County and we have to address those problems and even the taxes too and see where we stand, what can we do to help our citizens here. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just want to assure the citizens that are listening to this or sitting in our audience tonight that this board is very committed to working on this UDO. We hear you. We're listening. We have been listening. My colleagues are wonderful. I've talked to all of them. We are paying attention. We're going to make sure that things are addressed and we're fine with you. Keep letting us know what you think. Keep reading it and let us know. We're all dissecting it to death. It is, it is a novel. So it's going to take a lot to do it, but you know, I, I agree with you guys that, you know, we have to do what we want to do with this UDO for Newton County. We're not Cobb County. I told this man from the very beginning, "I do not want a cookie cutter. We will not accept a cookie cutter." So if that timeframe does not work and we're still working with a cookie cutter, we're not going to continue to work with a cookie cutter. I thought we were not ready for the presentation tonight. I was kind of against it. So, but we've got to continue to work on it and we've got to continue to have citizens involved. So I appreciate everybody that's involved. Be nice. We can all work together. Second thing is, is I want to commend Commissioner Mason for doing exactly what this board has been doing since January one. We are working with people. We're working with developers. We're trying to get the best thing that we can for this community. And you worked really hard with that gentleman, and I know you did, and to get a development that we think people can be happy with. We cannot dictate to people what they can actually lease their building or sell their building to in real estate. Most of the time when they put these in for rezoning, they don't own the building yet, guys. They're, this part of their, their petition to buy the building, okay? And so they can't get, they cannot get people to sign on to a building that they do not own, sign contracts on it. So understand that, that we are trying to do everything we can to get healthy and different things, but you know, there are some rights that landowners have and we have to recognize those by law, okay? So that's a long, another story, but we won't go into that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, we had an incident out at one, out at Highway eleven yesterday. We had some, something going on at the college. I'm sure most of you heard about it on Facebook or whatever. I just want to commend Newton County, the fire services, the sheriff's department, all them. I drove home yesterday and I'm going to tell you something, I felt safe. They had all staged up at the BP at Highway eleven, had DOT there with signs about slowdown. There was five ambulances, there was five fire trucks, there was police cars everywhere. They were looking for this individual coming through our neighborhood. They took it very seriously and I, I tell you, I was so proud when I went home of the way Newton County responded to that. And so that, I wanted to bring that up. And the second thing is, is breast cancer. My mom died twenty-two years ago today. And so, so get your mammograms, do what you need to do. I'm going to be wearing pink throughout the month for her. And I am walking on Saturday in Lockwall, having a big breast cancer walk. And if you want to join in, just send me a message and I'll let you know how you can join in. Thanks.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies, I didn't have anything to say a while ago, but I do now. I was listening to Commissioner Long and something dawned on me that I want the public to be aware that developers are no longer going to the commissioners to ask them for their opinion on what they would like to see there. They're going straight to the cities for annexations or they're going straight to Shayna's department to see what the ordinance is allowed for them to build. They are, they are bypassing us altogether now. So that's a, that's a, that's a two-edged sword, right? It's good and bad. They know not to bring certain things to us, but the bad point, bad side of that is they're not bringing certain things to us. So for even tweaking, they're just going out and, and going straight to the departments they need to go to to get things started. And I can tell you, these data centers, ninety-five percent of them are not feasible. Ninety-five percent of them are not feasible. Now, there's a certain section in Newton County that's kind of the perfect storm, but the, I have urged our economic development team to urge the governor to put together a task force that looks at these data centers for purposes of water, sewer, and electricity. Rolling brownouts are coming if we continue to build data centers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I believe Commissioner Henderson had something else.
Yes, ma'am. I forgot. Y'all, please forgive me. I'm having a town hall meeting on the fifteenth at six o'clock at Spring Hill Park and I'm inviting everybody to come and so we can, so we can talk about the issues of taxes, we can talk about the issues of data centers, of whatever it is that you want to talk about, we want to talk about it. And I sure would appreciate it. It could only be one other commissioner. All y'all can come. I step out and let you take over, but it can only be one other commissioner. You can't have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I forgot to mention too, we have a new member of our team, Ms. Stephanie Johnson. We're glad to have her with us tonight. She's with Gerardine Davis. So she'll be, she will be with us at our meetings. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.